All right, here we go. I'd like to call to order the Hatfield Township Workshop and Consolidated Regular Meeting for February 26, 2025. Roll call.
President Zipfel.
Here.
Vice President Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Andrus.
Here.
Commissioner Lestrako.
Here.
Commissioner Partha.
Here.
So I'm going to ask the two young ladies who are representatives of the North Penn African-American Alliance Club, who are going to be part of a presentation this evening, if they would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if everybody would stand.
Let's lead you to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, there's going to be a special presentation about and by the two of them in a little bit, and we're very excited about that. And Ms. Taylor, who is a representative of the organization, will be here as well, and she's come to us two or three times now, this is the last, I think, two or three years in a row, and it's always a good moment when we get to have the North Penn students kind of share their stories and share their insights. So we're looking forward to that. That'll happen shortly. So with that, let's move forward with the agenda. Is there a motion for approval of tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Partha, second by Commissioner Andrus. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, then I'll call a question. All in favor of approving tonight's agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved, we can move forward with what is in front of us. Citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments on agenda items only? Okay, not seeing anyone jump up. We're going to move right into the consent items. Is there a motion to enter into the record the consent items listed in your agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Vice President Rogers, second by Commissioner Lestrako. Those items include the police report for the month of January, the HTMA meeting minutes for the month of December, the VMSC monthly report for the month of January, the HTMA budget report for December 2024, and the treasurer's report for the month of February, paid bills in the amount of $60,835.11 and unpaid bills in the amount of $850,913.3. With that, I will call a question. All in favor of moving those into the record, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, those are moved into the record. Okay, we are going to actually hear from Pete Dorni, who is the Executive Director of the HTMA, the Hatfield Township Municipal Authority. He is going to walk us through the 2025-2026 budget overview, and Pete, the podium is yours. Pete annually comes in and shares with us the budget that's going to, the budget presentation, so residents know what to expect. Pete is, you know, he is a great leader of that organization, and so we're very appreciative when he comes and he shares with us the overview. So Pete, thanks for coming out again tonight.
You're welcome. My pleasure, and I'm honored to go first. So you were all presented with a copy of our proposed budget for this year, I believe, and I think we'll start with the bottom line. We propose a 5% increase. I also presented you with a five-page dissertation on why sewer plants are facing increases in general, and why we are facing increases in particular. I could go through some of those reasons for you and for the public who's sitting here. I have eight major reasons that I've written down from the dissertation that I presented you. So first of all, you have to go back to 1972, when the Clean Water Act was passed, and there was a rush and a mandate for wastewater treatment plants to be built. So if you do the math, that's over 50 years ago. We are one of those plants that started and was built in the 1970s. Fifty years is pretty much past the life expectancy of most wastewater treatment plants. We take good care of ours, so we're stretching ours out a little bit longer than we, than a lot of plants can, but we have a plant that has structure and equipment worth over $100 million. So over, when we get to this point, we're going to start having to replace a lot of the major equipment in the plant. That's number one. Every, all the wastewater treatment plants are in the same boat. You've probably read in the newspaper about the sewer rate increases for Lansdale Borough. I think they're doing 10%, 10%, 10%, then 8%, 5%, 3%, and they're projecting all the way out to 2037, which I don't know how they can do that, because I would not even take a chance at projecting out to 2037. Their rate increase is going to be, I think, 46% over till through 2028. So I'm proposing 5% this year. But the board thought about it, we discussed it in depth, and we just have to keep ahead of the costs that are coming. Cost number one, when it comes to infrastructure. We have a $10 to $12 million electrical grid replacement project that we have to get done. We've already delayed it a year in hopes that we would get significant grant money. And although we are happy that our representative and senator's got us $250,000 for this project, we were asking for over $15 million from a variety of different organizations. So we were shut down by FEMA and a number of other organizations that, you know, for a variety of reasons. I can, you know, I don't want to get into some of the reasons, but some of them are just that if you ask them, they say, number one, the sewer rates are too low now, and number two, the socioeconomic, socioeconomic of the township is too high right now for some of these grants. So we have to get that project done. I have on my list for the next five years about $17 million total in capital projects. So that's, those are two of the big reasons why we have to start looking at increasing sewer rates. Electric, you probably all have seen and written, seen the writings or the publications of what's going on with the electrical costs in the area. Our cost has gone up for 2025, $47,000 a year for our electric, for our plant. We have been running around $380,000 a year for electric, it's going to go up $47,000. And we've already been told by our electric broker that in 2026, we can expect another $47,000 a year increase. We just got lucky in that we put a one-year contract out, so we're only getting six months of the current price, and then six months of the real high prices, which are coming June 1st. Like I said, grants have failed. We have a few hopefuls yet that we're going to be applying for it in the next year, but we have to start the project. We have to get it moving, and once we're moving, we're not allowed to put shovel in the ground until those grants are approved or disapproved. So we can't build the project and hope for a grant, they won't allow, they won't give us a grant if we already start construction. Chemical costs have increased. We use close to $300,000 in chemicals, it's up to about $400,000 for this year. I think it's $425,000 is what I have budgeted for it. Chemical costs keep going up, and a lot of that has to do with energy costs going up, because chemicals are made from the, from the energy. Two of the things that are coming down the road for us that we know is going to be, is going to cost us money, luckily it's not this year, but it probably will be within the next five years, you've probably read about PFOS. They're going to be expecting sewer authorities to at least monitor significantly PFOS for a while, and depending on what they find, we're hoping they don't actually make us remove it, because that's millions and millions of dollars of cost to put in treatment to remove it, or chemicals, if you can use chemicals. And the other pollutant that is going to be a big concern of us is copper, believe it or not. Copper is allowed in drinking water in higher amounts than it is allowed in the effluent we discharge in the stream, and it also comes from a lot of copper pipes in the township, and then throughout the township. But there's really nothing we can do about that. This past year, EPA got rid of one of our, let me go back to the last time we had a copper limit made for us. About five years ago, we were able to do a site-specific study that was approved by EPA that showed that we could put a certain amount of copper into the stream. This year, when we got our permit, EPA pulled that out, pulled the rug out from under that. So now, copper will go back to the previous limits, which are approximately six times lower than they are for us now. We cannot meet that copper limit without advanced treatment or without chemicals. Either one of those is going to cost a lot of money. So basically, what we want to do is prepare for the future, get our budget off and running on a good foot, so that we don't have to come back in, you know, five years and say we need a 40% increase, or something like that. I would suspect that these increases are going to continue, there's just, I don't see, I see the handwriting on the wall, I don't see anything going down in costs. And if you see on that front page of that budget, you can see what the area, other area sewer rates charge. Now, that's not an excuse for us to increase rates, but you can see that we are the lowest in the area, and we would like to continually keep this as the lower in the area. And you can also see the average costs for the private companies that you've read about in the newspaper, what they charge on an annual basis. So the increase that we propose will increase the residential sewer rates $20 a year. Any other question, any questions?
No, you got to it right there at the end there.
What's that?
You got to it right there in the end with the numbers.
Oh, the dollar amount, yeah.
Yeah, the dollar amount, which I know is probably ultimately people were saying, okay, 5% turns into roughly what?
Yeah, $20 a year. Not exactly, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Twenty, yeah.
Yep.
So I know our neighbor raised it $140 a year last year, their sewer rate. Somebody else raised it on the other side, 70, I won't mention any names, $75 a year. But we're hoping that $20 a year is not too horrific.
Why don't, why are you competing for electric rates? What's the deal with electric rates? Yet you actually bid, you're not using the grid as the rest of us do at our homes?
We go through a broker to get the best possible costs with requests for proposals from the companies.
Okay.
So we're not buying energy from PICO, we're buying energy from a, like, private citizens could do for shop around.
Right.
So we put out requests for proposals from the largest companies, Constellation, UGI, they all give us the best price they can for whatever contract. Usually, they offer us one, two, or three-year contracts at whatever price it comes out at. So the one-year contract was $47,000 a year. If we were to go on with a two, it was approximately $90,000 a year.
Okay. And I assume you're getting a better rate than what residents get then? Is that correct?
Yes.
Right.
Yes, our base rate for kilowatt hour is .05, right now .055, I think.
Okay, thank you.
When was the last time you guys reviewed your tapping fees?
What's that?
When was the last time you guys reviewed your tapping fees?
I think it was like, three years ago. We'd do it, yeah. They don't change a lot unless we have a lot of extra new equipment, new sewer lines and stuff added, and we have to do it according to Act 203, and that was done by our engineer approximately, approximately three years ago. And we have one of the lowest tapping fees in the area.
Okay.
Pete, I'm sorry if I missed this, but did you mention with the increase, it's still, HTMA is still where then, within the region?
It's still the lowest.
Okay, just make sure that's clear.
Yeah, I was going to say, I saw, as we were just explaining, you know, the decision-making process there, I was looking at the last page of the write-up, or one of the two write-ups, and it talks about that we remain the lowest sewer rate in the surrounding area. That's still an act, even with the $20 per year increase, that's still true? That's still accurate?
That's correct. The next lowest, I believe, is $475 a year, and they will be, they're probably going to consider a rate increase next year.
Okay.
And Commissioners, you probably remember this, but about three years ago, we did a more comprehensive fee analysis throughout the tri-county region. And HTMA is within, in the lower 5% of all the authorities within the entire Delaware Valley. It's worth pointing out.
Especially now that the private companies are taking over a lot of them.
Right. Okay, so, well, obviously, we'll take a close look at this, and this is step one in the process, we know that, so, or less, you know, presentation to us anyway, so.
Yeah.
And we have a great working relationship with your office, so if we have any questions, we'll, we'll direct them over to your office, and, you know, we'd appreciate if you just let us know if, you know, if we're looking at it correctly, and maybe flesh out some thoughts, maybe further if necessary. But this is, is a pretty thorough description. I mean, for those of you who don't have it in front of you, it literally is entitled, "Why are Sewer Rates Rising?", right? And it is a synopsis, a more detailed description of what you just provided us, so it's really, it's really well thought out, thank you.
It's also on our website, htmasewer.com.
Okay.
Should be right on the front page, "Why are Sewer Rates Rising?", click on it.
Okay.
That'll give you a good indication, anybody can read it then.
Okay, no, that's great, I appreciate it. Any questions, Commissioners?
Were you guys, at one point, I thought you were thinking about solar panels?
Correct. We will be thinking about that again as soon as we get our grid project done, because we were advised that, because our current, the grid project, when I say the grid project, all the transformers, all the switchgear, all the underground cable throughout the plant has to be replaced. We were advised when I talked to PICO that PJM or PICO probably would not permit us for the solar farm yet, until we got all of the infrastructure for the grid done, and then we'll go back to look at that solar project, yeah.
Sounds good.
Pete, I assume everything that you're doing to upgrade the grid on the plant, would be able to accommodate solar panels then, if, should you choose to do that?
Well, the only thing, the only thing that we would need when the company comes in to do the solar is the switchgear, and that will, that's part of this project, the switchgear, because we also have in the back of our heads, we originally looked at the project for the grid to put in an uninterruptible power supply in for the plant, it's a drops, it's a dynamic kinetic inner, uninterruptible. But after we got final costs and things, it just was not feasible to put those costs on the ratepayers, especially since we weren't getting any grants for it. If we would have gotten grants for it, we would, we would have done it. But, so the switchgear is going in no matter what we use, either solar or a D drops. One switch, one piece of, one switchgear, that's it.
So will be compatible, if you just go down the path of solar panels then? You'll be able to do it?
It will be compatible with a solar panel, yeah, with a solar farm, if we go that, if we go that direction.
Got it, thank you.
Yep.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Just lastly, Commissioners, Pete's been dodging me for years. We want to feature him in our newsletter, because how many years now have you served this community, Pete?
Forty-four.
And serves it like no other, and we want to, we want to make sure every resident knows, and so I think the Commissioners should make sure Pete commits to being featured in the newsletter in the next session, edition.
Yep.
Front page.
Or else no budget.
There you go.
Hey Pete, sometimes this thing's been a sewer authority.
It seems unanimous, Pete.
Thank you.
Residents and Commissioners alike.
Thank you.
So maybe, and actually, maybe just right now, a round of applause for what you've really done, for a wonderful job for so many years, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
And then someday, we'll make you even more uncomfortable of bringing you in and giving you an award or a recognition, and then you'll really hate us for it.
Yeah, I believe it.
Yep. We're all looking forward to it.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you for coming out.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Okay, all right, another great presentation by Pete. We, nobody likes to hear about any percentage increase, but thankfully, it's, you know, it's $20 a year, and it's not a number that hopefully is, well, it's totally understandable given the events that you've described, and we appreciate your thoughtfulness in that. So our next item, special item, is Carmina Taylor, who is our friend who has come to us a few years now, we're very excited. She is the representative, the head of the North Penn African-American Alliance Club presentation, and Carmina, I don't know if they whispered to you, but we had the young ladies lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening, so we already had them part, you know, be a part of our event, and tonight, you're going to highlight them, and we really appreciate your coming out to do so.
So, good evening, everyone. I apologize for being late, I live in the city. I wanted to first give some context of why Black History Month is important, and I wanted to give some context about me. I grew up in Lower Gwinnett, in Penland, Lower Gwinnett Township, Wisconsin Hicken School District. I was that young black girl that was on the field hockey team, on the lacrosse team by herself. I was one of those black girls that was just only in some of the honors classes. I was that black girl. And when I was 16, my mother and her friends and her colleagues were part of the NAACP. I was my mom's youngest child, so I had the pleasure of being dragged around the county. And it was because of those experiences of people loving on me, and people molding me and advising me, that I had a passion to serve people, serve others. And what we're doing this year is, I just want clarification, I am the advisor for the Cultural Proficiency Group, but their club is part of North Penn High School. I just want to put a pin on what I said to acknowledge how exceptional this body is. You stand out in supporting the efforts of your community members than any other community, any other town municipality in the North Penn School District area and on this side of the county, and that is to be commended. I mean, I am exceptionally biased to Aaron and to Chief Tierney and to all of you, but I want to acknowledge how important it is for leaders in the community to be allies for young people today. And one of the things that they're going to, what the ladies are going to talk about tonight is their perspective of where they feel they are right now. And I think with all the things that have occurred in the last few months, last year, it's so vitally important that we listen to these young people. I mean, really listen to what they're saying, how they're feeling. And I have been so supportive of them, and Ayla, I've been, you know, she's a senior now, so I always have this like heartstring thing for seniors. And it's just a wonderful thing to know that I was part of her becoming a young woman and a young leader like she is today, and to give her the confidence to be able to share her perspective. And I say that to all of you because I do have a huge announcement. I am going to be leaving the country in, I guess, the end of June, July, to go study in a doctoral program on global peace and conflict, because I really feel like I need to leave this country. As a woman of color, as a mother of a young black man, and just knowing that God has a greater purpose for me, and I'm trying to listen to Him, and I think that in the end, I will be more beneficial for global peace and conflict, and that's what it is. So I say all that to say that after you hear from these young ladies, that you and this community, part of the North Penn School District community, will continue to be allies for these young people outside of Black History Month. This gives them an opportunity to express who they are, but Black History is really American history, and it's 365 days of the year. But what is most important is that children in North Penn School District need adults to be with them every step of the way. So I hope you give, thank you for giving me the privilege of saying that, because I think it's really, really important to continue to support young people. And I'm going to look on you to look after my kids at North Penn after I leave, okay? You're a cell phone call away, and so are you. So I want to introduce Ayla Jamison and Michaela, because I think these are wonderful human beings, they decided to represent their student club, and so without further ado, Ms. Ayla and Michaela.
Hi, everyone. Hi, everyone, I'm Ayla Jamison.
I'm Michaela Wright.
And I'm your current senior at North Penn, and we did have a name change this year for our club. We used to be African-American Alliance Club, but now we are BSU or Black Student Union. I am the, one of the current co-presidents.
I'm the secretarial treasurer.
And if you're unfamiliar on what we strive to do at North Penn as BSU, we are a club that welcomes anybody that supports the black culture and wants to be part of a welcoming community. We provide a space where there, where other black students can connect and share their experiences and celebrate our culture, but also addressing issues that affect them both on school and off school campus. This evening, we are here to present an open letter titled, "To Whom It May Concern for Black History Month." To whom may concern, school is meant to be a place of learning, growth, and opportunity. But for many black children or children of color, it is also a place where we have to navigate harmful stereotypes that shape how we are treated. To whom may concern, students like us can't even feel represented in advanced classes because we are always expected to prove our worth and raise our peers never have to. To whom may concern, our academic achievements shouldn't be met with surprise while our struggles are met with lower expectations. To whom may concern, we should not have to keep our head down or be silent when other students that don't agree with us, politically or otherwise, we should be able to have a voice too. And this is to North Penn, we wish that for future generations, you all can understand and listen to us now, so it can be more welcoming for them. And on behalf of North Penn's Black Student Union, we appreciate you all listening to us diligently and listening to our voices, letting us have one. Enjoy your evening and happy Black History Month.
Thank you. Well, thank you, and it's bittersweet to say hi and bye to all of you, but again, I think what's really important, what I'd like to highlight, is that you guys have been exceptional. Aaron has been consistently supportive of everything, and even when I call him all the time, when he's dealing with his kids and everything else, he still finds a way to get back to me. So I just really want to say thank you, guys. It's a new world, it's a new day, and we all have to stick together, wherever we live, whatever we look like, whatever community we represent, okay? Oh, any questions for the girls? What motivated you to, to share your thoughts with them? Can I say that?
Absolutely.
All right, go ahead. What motivated you?
For me personally, just knowing, like, other black students or students of color, they have the same opinions as us or feel the same way, but they don't feel like they could speak up and say this or have a voice, so this is mainly for those kids that can't, that don't feel comfortable speaking up, or feel like if they do speak up, that they might not be listened to.
And so, Michaela, why do you think Black History is important? American history, why is it important, and why is it important in your school community?
Oh, especially at North Penn, I think it's important to prevent, like, ignorance, because, especially in reaction to our show last year, we saw a lot of that, and I think educating people would help show our perspective and help, just for better reactions, you know?
So, both of you, if you were a freshman again, what would you tell your senior self, your, what would you tell your freshman self as a senior now? Or sophomore, high school, when you went to high school, what's one advice you'd give to an incoming sophomore?
Mainly just to keep your head up, like, you're definitely going to experience a lot of challenges, and there's going to be tons of people that are going to question your judgment, but just say truth to yourself, and just remember your history, like our history.
You, would you like to add something to that?
I think Ayla said it really well, I don't know.
Would you like to just share what you guys are going to do next year? Post-North Penn?
Oh, well, I don't.
Have you decided yet?
I haven't decided yet.
Where have you been accepted?
Like Howard, Hampton.
Awesome, awesome. Those are HBCUs, historically black colleges and universities, and I, I think for students of color in Montgomery County, it is that all of our schools are predominantly white, it's very good for students of color to go to a high, a place of higher education with other students of color, just so they can really be in tune with their culture. So I'd ask, like, my number one, to get out of your community and go somewhere else and have a black experience. Not against white people, it's just that this is what they need to build themselves and to be in a community of other kids that are coming together. So congratulations to you, Howard is, Howard is our Harvard. Michaela, what you going to do next year?
Next year, I'm going to nursing school at Montgomery Community College, and my end goal is to become a pediatric nurse practitioner, and after Monca, I'm going to go to Greenwich Mercy.
Awesome, awesome. So, you know, one of the things that, I got really busy this year, and when I reached back in the beginning of the year and I talked to Ayla, and she had aspirations to maximize her senior year, and so I wanted to make. her senior year, and so I wanted to make sure I was a part of making sure she had a way to maximize her senior year. So let's all think about how we can maximize the student experience at North Penn. Thank you, I'm going to stop talking. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Ms. Taylor and ladies, hold on, you're not done yet. Yeah, we have, I have a couple of questions and then I, no, 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 we're going to take some pictures, but I have a couple of questions.
Yes, students are me?
A little both, actually. So first, for Ms. Taylor, this has been a super important event for us over the last three, four number of years that you've done it. We're going to be crushed that you're not a part of that. At the same time, I'm hopeful that someone will fill your shoes and be here and lead the organization so that we will see North Penn students here again next year. And so without putting you on the spot, I hope you have someone who is following your direction and is going to lead just like as well as you have. And I want to thank you for bringing students to us for so many years, so you deserve a round of applause.
What I will say is for all of you, you have an exceptional superintendent, you have an exceptional school board, and it says that they are really intentionally trying to make sure that students have the best experience that they can. You know that your school district is the largest one in Montgomery County, and that's hard, and they do their best. And I think if there's anything that I would want you to know about leadership, you try to serve as many people as you can, the best way you can, $20 for a sewer increase, that is better, right? Right? So you went through that process. And so I just want you to realize that you do have a gem of leadership in your school district. I don't know, they tell me it's hard to fill my shoes, I don't know. I don't know who they could have that they're going to replace, but one of the things that I did promise the district, because I've been with North Penn doing this targeted work for about five years, is that I am going to put together a parent empowerment checklist, just so parents are equipped on how to navigate spaces for kids. I am going to put together a leadership checklist for students, and I am also, there's three things that I'm leaving them to mobilize and make some plans for the year. So that's what's in place, who it is, I don't know. But Todd and the school board are exceptional.
Okay, that's great. So now I have, for the students, I have a favor on behalf of the board. You're seniors now, so you're going off to do wonderful things, which we just heard about, and congratulations to both of you. You're, just before senioritis totally hits, right? And, right? And then you've, your mind has moved on to college already. The favor is this, please make sure that there's someone behind you to pick up the mantle and to follow you and to be here next year. So find those sophomores and juniors who say, you know what, we went to Hatfield Township meeting, you know, last night or a week ago, or whenever it is, you should think about being the person who shows up there next year. So if you can do that for us as a favor, we'd be greatly appreciative.
Of course. I just want to share that with the community. So the student ambassadors at North Penn are creating a leadership forum, and they're going back into the middle school to mentor the middle schoolers, the ninth graders, to prepare them for transition to high school, but they are regrouping the BSU, and they have sophomores, current juniors and sophomores in the pipeline. But it's all about, you know, passing the baton. And she got, they got passed the baton by Yuri and Karina that was here last year, right?
Yep.
So that's, that's in the pipeline, that's in the pipeline.
I know I embarrassed her last year, but Karina's grandpop is sitting right next to me.
I know.
And she's having a good, ours are very good schools.
She won't call me back.
Yeah, I have the same problem. Treat her to dinner, then she shows up.
I'm trying to entice her as well, but you know, that's the thing, Karina has gone off to Howard, and she's had an exponential experience that she earned, actually, that she earned.
She did.
And, you know, it's just a good environment, so it's hard to let go. I don't get my feelings hurt, because, you know, I know they think about me, but I do check in, and so definitely, you should be proud. She's a good girl.
She is, very good girl.
All right, unless any other commissioners have anything?
No, thank you so much.
Then we will embarrass you with some photographs. If that's all right.
See, I came with my special glasses.
Yeah, we see. Beautiful.
All right. Oh, wait, no. Oh, wait, I am pretty bright.
Maybe you'll get a response.
Oh, you got me. All right, let's try to hold it through. Erin, we should take a picture again.
Finally, we'll get him.
You got to get him working.
Yeah.
Oh, Erin. Over here. You guys are listening to Erin, let me tell you.
as interesting or as exciting, but we're going to jump right into the planning and zoning committee, Vice President Rogers.
All right. Thank you. First item is the Corner Brook Land Development Discussion.
Thanks, Vice President Rogers. Let me just get our PowerPoint set up. We have Amy Farrell here, who is here on behalf of the applicant. Amy's going to walk the board through the project, tonight's discussion only, and then it'll be in front of the board for consideration at a future meeting. So Amy, would you like, what would you like to start with?
I think the last sheet of the land development set actually is an aerial, so that might be the easiest place to start. And unfortunately, I think the commissioners are correct, this is not going to be nearly as inspiring as what you just heard, but I'm going to do my best.
So last sheet of this file?
Yep.
Okay, give me one second. And actually, Amy, if you, give me a second, just for perspective, because I know members of the community that are watching always ask me to make sure they, we show them where in the town this project is before the presentation begins, so let me just start with that. So this is Corner Brook, Corner Brook Land Development at Old Bethlehem Pike. This is the parcel in question that we're discussing tonight, just shy of an acre, right, Amy?
Yep.
Then I'll go into the, your slides, and then the floor is yours.
Okay, great, thanks. And as Erin said, Amy Farrell with Kaplan Stewart were the attorneys for the applicants here this evening. This is the preliminary final land development for 958 Old Bethlehem Pike. And as you can see from the aerial behind me, this is about as irregularly shaped a lot as you would find. It has frontage on both Line Lexington and Old Bethlehem Pike, as well as a pretty complicated intersection relationship condition at the corner there. The existing conditions on this site include a two-story residential structure pretty much right at the corner that was previously converted to apartments by a prior owner, as well as a two-story carriage house that also historically housed an apartment unit. And as you can see from the aerial, that existing carriage house is right at the property line. It is practically in the road in its existing condition. The proposal is to remove the carriage house, renovate the existing apartment structure at the corner into three units, and construct a new 10-unit structure, two stories, on the site, together with the 33 required parking spaces. And Erin, if we can switch back to the very first slide, that'll give us the overall site plan. The redevelopment also includes new driveway improvements to both Line Lexington and Old Beth, as well, one onto each roadway, together with sidewalk and curbing improvements, as well as all the requisite stormwater, lighting, landscaping, et cetera. This project did receive zoning hearing board approval in October of 2023 to permit the 13 dwelling units and to allow 61.4% impervious coverage where 60% is permitted. The planning commission also, in October of last year, issued a recommendation for preliminary final land development conditioned on a couple of things, the applicant redesigning the proposed intersection curb radius and the utility pole relocation to the satisfaction of the township engineer, and compliance with CKS's landscaping comments from its October 2024 review. So from October to now, we've sort of worked through those last remaining comments. We've resubmitted and are now in receipt of a January 29, 2025 CKS review, which, as you'll see, I believe you have it, supports all the requested waivers. It includes a few open items, largely notational in nature, all of which are will comply. And with that, we really believe this project is ready for your consideration for preliminary final approval. I do have with me this evening Rachel Bush, Butch, excuse me, with RL Showalter. They are the engineers of record for this project, and Rachel can certainly walk you through the project, discuss the waivers in more specificity if you'd like, and of course, answer any questions that you might have. We do also have our landscape architect with us this evening as well, if there's any specific landscaping questions. I know Brian, as I said, has completed a review, and we have that review letter, so I'll leave it to the board if you'd like more detail from Rachel, or if there's simply questions we can answer, whichever your preference is.
Stormwater management? Is there retention basin or underground or above ground?
There's, there's an underground basin. There's also a rain garden to supplement it, so we're, they're compliant. There's some minor tweaks that they have to make with drafting stuff, but it will be compliant.
Thank you.
Is there any plans of opening up the rest of that road?
I'm sorry?
Is there any plans on opening up the rest of the, the Old Bethlehem Pike?
So we're not making any suggestion that Old Bethlehem Pike would be further opened, nor does it need to be along this frontage in order to accommodate our work.
Because I could see a lot of cut through there, right?
Cut, cut through to?
From 309.
Traffic.
The traffic coming through.
Yeah. That's a pretty awkward turn, I think. If you go back to the aerial, it might be a little easier to see.
When you're coming off 309 instead of going up to the light, you make a left and go through the lube place, right? And I got the right location, right? Across from, behind Unives Bank.
Yep.
Yeah.
Right, this is the car wash.
Down a little bit further, right where the car wash is, down a little further. There's a no-turn sign. I would imagine that that would become pretty popular for people cutting through there rather than going all the way up to the light.
Oh, I mean, you could physically do that, but it's awkward. I mean, we, between myself and Anton Kuner, we did look at this pretty closely in terms of, you know, improvements. We were pretty adamant about getting the turning radius correct at the intersection of Old Beth and, and the Line Lex, and so I, not to say that somebody couldn't cut through some of those other properties as you get further south, but it's, we didn't, didn't see that being much that we were going to be able to control, so much as we have, we have them proposing some widening a little bit along the site frontage on Old Bethlehem Pike, and a little bit of curbing, considering that most of that stretch of what was a regular road, and it's now, technically it's a road, but it's more of like a driveway, really. We did get some improvements that we felt would be reasonable and appropriate, but I don't know that for, I think that improving the turning radius going south, we think that was necessary regardless. I don't think we felt that it was going to open up people using it as a cut through that wouldn't necessarily do that now. I, you know, like I, I'm not trying to sell the project so much as I, we didn't consider cut through traffic, really.
It's going to be more people there now, there's only like two or three houses.
Oh, yeah, no, no question. I mean, there will be 10 apartments plus the other three, so yeah, there will be more traffic, but I think when we were looking at it relative to the area, we didn't feel like there was going to be a big enough jump, like, oh my God, we better try to maybe not allow right turns out of the site or something all that. It just didn't seem like it was necessary to go over and above what's already shown on the plan. I mean, if, if we could revisit it, but.
Just a question.
Yep.
Other questions, comments?
Related to traffic, commissioners, there is a review letter in the packet from Bowman Engineers in Anton's office, if you'd like to read it further, just to see all of their thoughts when reviewing.
All right, so any, any other part of your presentation that you'd like us to know now? And I mean, we're not making a decision tonight, obviously.
Right, no, it's, again, entirely up to you. We're happy to answer any of the questions. We do have a series of waivers that were requested. I believe they've all been acknowledged by both Bowman and CKS, and they're supported in terms of those waiver requests. If you wanted to go through those, we certainly can, if they're, I mean, I think most of them are pretty typical of what you're seeing these days because of some of the kind of changes to stormwater, but again, happy to go through those if we should or need to.
Well, my inclination is, what do we, what's the plan? We would typically go to our next meeting, right? Which is, or is it going to be our next regular meeting?
Be up to the board. So traditionally, we have a discussion, and then the following meeting, it's in front of the board for consideration. We had the cancelable meeting because of the weather, so we could have it in front of the board for consideration at the workshop meeting in March. That would give enough time for the solicitor to finalize the approval resolution. I believe it's somewhat drafted.
So why don't we plan on that? I'm looking for a consensus among commissioners. Does that sound like a good, at least, schedule?
I guess as long as it doesn't snow.
Oh. Okay, so let's do that. So we'll move it to the, to that next, to the next meeting, and then, of course, there'll be another opportunity for not only commissioners, but also for residents to ask any questions and make comments, certainly before a decision is made, so, okay?
We'll see you then. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, thank you for coming out. We'll see you in a few weeks.
Okay, item two is the 18-month maintenance period for the 30-35 Campus Drive Land Development Resolution.
Thanks, Vice President Rogers. We're going to let Brian just give a quick synopsis on this item.
Thank you. Yeah, this is one of, we've had quite a few projects lately that have been completed, and they are ready to be, we're recommending that the project is, has been satisfactorily completed, relative to what was in the respective development agreements. This is for turn 14, for the sort of next phase of that project. It was actually done late calendar year last year. I believe they had a change of ownership or something, so it took a little bit to figure out who was going to pony up for the 18-month maintenance escrow. That, I believe that's all been addressed, so we're recommending that the project is complete and that they enter into the 18-month maintenance period.
Okay, any questions or comments? Now, this is something we can act on tonight because it's Resolution 2502, so I'll ask, is there a motion for approval of Resolution 2502?
Some votes.
Motion by Commissioner Andrews, second by Commissioner Lestrako. Any questions or comments? No, hearing none, then I'll call a question. All in favor of Resolution 2502, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. Okay. Bob, anything else under planning and zoning?
No, that's it for tonight, thank you.
Okay, Public Works Committee, Erin.
Thanks, President Zipfo. Just one item here, considered housekeeping by nature. It's an approval for an expense that was budgeted. It's a dump truck that's being purchased for our Public Works Department. This is half of the expense. This is just to approve the body itself from Peterbilt, then it gets a plow, and then it gets the rear portion of the dump installed by a different vendor, so we'll see that invoice come our way later. This is a several-month-long process, but this is our large capital purchase that we budgeted for the Public Works Department for 2025.
Okay, it's as budgeted, so this is best practice. Any questions or comments before I ask for a motion? All right, is there a motion for approval for the dump truck payment, $126,260.42, as budgeted? Is there such a motion?
Some move.
Motion by Vice President Rogers, second by Commissioner Andrews. Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. All right, anything else under Public Works?
That's all, Mr. President.
Okay, Public... I'm sorry, Parks and Recreation Committee, Commissioner Lestrako.
Thank you, President Zipfo. Okay, so I know that this is kind of last minute, but because we didn't meet earlier, Tuesday, March 4th, if you want to just check your calendars, and if you're interested in this, it's at 6:00 PM here at the Township Building, and it's estate planning and wills. So that will be here this coming Tuesday, March 4th. Next month, they will have a full report about Earth Day activities, and there'll be a lot of events for that. Winter yoga is still going on, and then our spring yoga will begin April 13th. So we also have all of our other exercise classes here, so please check your website, our website here, so that you can look into that if you're interested. And that completes my report. I'll have a lot more next month.
Okay, all right. We're going to move to the Public Safety Committee, Commissioner Partha.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would register our township manager.
Sure. Thanks, Commissioner Partha. Just a few housekeeping items similar to what I had in the prior update. One, and Chief's not here yet, another obligation, or else he would have given a... I'm sure he would have loved that, but I'm sure he's happy that I'm doing it for him. So periodically, just like we do with our zoning ordinance and our subdivision and land development ordinances and other policies, we try to just make sure they're current. We have our new, or calling our Traffic Safety Division within our police department that we've talked about over the years, that Chief's trying to staff and grow, because a lot of the issues that we interact with residents are based on some of the concerns through the neighborhoods and the police presence. So this new department, one of the first tasks they're doing is just making sure our ordinance is updated with accurate speed limit signs throughout the town. So it's not as if, at this point, they're not asking for anything to be changed, they're just going through the ordinance to make sure what is in the ordinance is reflected in the field. So over time, PennDOT sometimes will change the speed limit, for example, which they did on Route 309 near Bergy, southbound, which was recently reduced because of all the accidents that we've had, several unfortunately fatal, which was when the left turn was restricted by PennDOT, the speed limit was reduced. So now we just need to update our ordinance so it reflects what's actually in the field. So no action in front of the board tonight. They're going through the review process. When they identify those that need updated, it will get sent to our solicitor's office to draft an ordinance. That will come back to the commissioners for consideration at that point, so expect to see that over the next period of months. Item number two is a truck payment for Hatfield Fire. It is a squad truck with Pierce. We were going to have the leadership from the fire companies here tonight, but scheduling issue with them as well, they're going to be here in late March to be recognized. The commissioners are aware that both fire companies work together to put together a capital plan, a purchasing plan of large items such as fire trucks, and they did a tremendous job of working together and creating efficiencies and reducing the number of trucks that we had duplicated in the past. So this is a purchase that actually was approved in 2022. That's how slow it is to actually pick up a fire truck these days. Ordered in 2022, budgeted back then, and finally will be taking delivery at some point this year. The township's portion of the fire truck payment is $528,759. The total payment is over $1 million for a squad truck. This is coming out of the fire fund, not the general fund. Hatfield has a dedicated mileage rate for these type of purchases specifically, can be only used for these type of purchases. And hopefully, next month, we'll talk a little bit more when we have the leadership here from the fire companies about some of the modifications they made to this plan. But I have it in front of me, a five-year plan to replace much of the equipment and the trucks while keeping our funds solvent, without any adjustments needed to the tax rate, to fully equip both our fire companies. A pretty impressive accomplishment. So this is the payment that was approved three years ago, budgeted throughout. Now the check is due. So that'll be the township's portion, 49% of the liability, 51% will be Hatfield Fire. So if the board would consider approving that, we can move that forward and get the fire company a check that they need when we take delivery. And we will, the fire company will bring the new squad to a public meeting when they get it, like they have done in the past. It's been a few years, but we'll have it out front. If anybody wants to come out and bring their kids, and they can sit in it and ride in it, I'm sure it'll be at a lot of events as well, but we'll have it here first for everybody to check out our new investment.
Looking forward to that.
Yeah, it should be fun.
Okay, so that's Public Safety, and anything else under...
Yeah, the only thing, Mr. President, if the board would consider just approving the expense for the fire truck from the fire fund.
Okay, but actually, I stepped over Commissioner Partha. Shehial, I'm not sure if you have anything else on under Public Safety?
No, it's good.
Okay. So you need...
Calling for a vote.
Yeah, you need that as a...
Yeah, just the approved.
You need approval as budgeted.
Correct.
Yep.
From the fire.
From the fire fund.
Yep.
Okay, so let me see if I can cobble together the motion, and I'll make the motion. So the chair will make a motion to approve the fire truck payment from the fire fund for the equipment and vehicle as budgeted.
Perfect.
Okay, all right, I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Andrews. Any other questions or comments? Everyone's excited. Are we going to be able to take pictures with the new vehicle?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I want to ride. I want to play with the siren.
Hopefully, residents come out with their kids, and we'll let them...
That would be great.
Get in there, yeah.
So we give everybody as much notice as we can, so that would be fantastic. So, okay, any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, then I'll call a question. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. Okay, Shehial, anything else under Public Safety? Are you good?
No, he's good.
Okay, Finance Committee, Commissioner Andrews.
Yes, thank you very much. Earlier this evening, the Finance Committee met to talk about if there's ways to improve our tax collection efficiency. No official action was taken, just a discussion, and we'll see if that conversation continues amongst the board. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move on to our Township Manager's report. Erin, it looks like you've got a few items.
Few items. Thanks, Mr. President. First item is just a summary of our Code Department from 2024. We've produced this document for the last several years, just to give the commissioners and the residents a sense of what goes on in what is probably our busiest department. Quick overview, Department Head Don Delamater, with over 30 years of experience in local government. We have a third-party building code official, Keystone Municipal Services, that does all the inspections for the township. And then we have a fire marshal, code enforcement officer, two full-time admin employees, and one part-time admin, as well as a part-time fire inspector. So a relatively small team, and a small team that reviews and issues over 2,000 permits a year, a very busy department. 548 building permits, as you can see, 349 electrical permits, use and occupancy permits, 359. All of these require an application being submitted, a review, back and forth between the applicant and the township, inspections, engineers. It's a very in-depth process, and I hope that we have improved it over the years to where it's not a burden to the residents. No one likes to get a permit, but ultimately, the permit, our team can ensure that everything is done correctly and safely, and provide a safe outcome for the residents. So our goal is to get them in and out quickly, and inspected quickly, and not slowing down projects for our community, businesses, and residents. So just some other statistics that I thought you might find interesting. Annually, our department inspects 2,294 apartments, and that's one person. Our Mike McCann, who we're all familiar with, he does them all, and he runs marathons, and this is part of his training.
Yeah, he does.
He actually, Mike has run a marathon on a Sunday and inspected about 1,000 apartments on a Monday after. I mean, he's built different, as my kids say. And in those inspections, we found 27% of the apartments have had some type of violation that was corrected, usually a life safety issue where the smoke detectors aren't functioning or some other type of life safety issue that is identified and corrected, creating a safer place for the residents, a safer place for our fire companies. Over 1,100 businesses that get inspected annually, every two years, sorry, annually by our team, to ensure the, again, life safety issues, make sure these items are current, are fixed, are updated, to make sure that we have a safe facilities for the community and the residents that are visiting these businesses. The last bullet point that I think's important, because it's something the commissioners have really invested in over the years and emphasized, is a partnership between the township and the fire companies. So this year, 2024 alone, there were 534 responses to fire incidents that involved township employees. So our fire marshal, code enforcement officer, and now nine Public Works employees all volunteer and participate with both fire companies. So that's something, over the years, we emphasized, it was not an easy thing to get going, but once it started, it's really grown, and that's a testament to the leaders at the fire company who have trained our employees to be firefighters, and our employees willing to do it, and actually, they all love it now. Once they get in, they have gone full-in firefighter mode. So that's 534 times that we're partnering to keep our community safer. And that's really a way to supplement the volunteers, because we've all heard of volunteer firefighting has declined 90% over the last 40 years, so we're doing our best to keep them afloat. So that's a summary of 2024 for the Code Department, another busy year, similar to 2023. Moving on to the next item, commissioners, the EV charging station. So we did discuss this last month. We need to do a public hearing because it is a change to our zoning code. I have a summary of it, but, Mr. President, if you want to take us out of the public meeting and into a public hearing...
To do the public hearing, yeah.
And then our solicitor will get it going, and then I can give a quick summary of what the ordinance says, and then we can see if there's any public comment.
All right, for those of you who are following what just happened there, what we're about to do is, it might seem like we're in the same meeting, but we're not, we're going to take... I'm going to take a motion to actually exit the regular meeting to go into a public hearing. Then I'm going to hand over the reins to our solicitor and our township manager, and then at the conclusion of that, we will then go back into the meeting and presumably take a motion for approval of an ordinance that's outstanding related to the EV charging stations. So why don't we begin with that? Is there a motion to suspend the regular meeting and go into a public hearing? Is there such a motion?
Some move.
Motion by Vice President Rogers, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any questions or comments about the procedure? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor of suspending the regular meeting and going into a public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we are out of the regular meeting into a public hearing. The solicitor will take over, and no one feels any different or otherwise.
Thank you. At this time, for the record, I'm going to mark the following exhibits into the record. The letter to the reporter is T1, the proof of publication is T2, the attested letter to the law library is T3, the actual ordinance is T4, the legal notice is T5, the county planning commission letter is T6. At this time, I'll move them into the record. I'm going to turn it over to the township manager to provide a summary of this ordinance. Then we'll take questions from the board, and then questions from the public if they have it, and then close the public hearing, and then proceed back into the public meeting and entertain a vote. Township manager?
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Commissioners, this is relatively straightforward. When our zoning code was produced, there were no electric vehicle chargers. Over time, we have to make updates to meet the current demands, current marketplace. So what this ordinance simply does, and this is only for Level 2 and Level 3 EV chargers, so this does not affect people that have a Level 1 charger within their home at a residential stint, right? So this is just commercial chargers.
Commercial chargers.
This is making sure they are in a location that is safe, that won't start a fire, that will burn down a building, or landscaping, or other of these items. So you can see a summary of the ordinance, and the ordinance in its entirety is in the packet for everyone to review if you would like. But this is essentially what the ordinance, the point of the ordinance is when people, when mostly businesses are installing electric vehicle chargers, we want them away from these items, far enough away to where if there's an issue, it doesn't affect any of these items that you see summarized, and all of those are outlined in the ordinance. So we talked about it a month ago. It's been advertised. It's just an update.
At this time, are there any questions from the board on this ordinance? Seeing none? Is there any questions from the public on this ordinance? Seeing none, I'll turn it back over to the Mr. President to entertain a motion to close the public hearing and proceed back into a public hearing, and then entertain a vote on this ordinance.
All right, then I will entertain a motion for approval to leave the public hearing and go back into the regular hearing. Is there such a motion?
Some move.
Motion by Vice President Rogers, second by Commissioner Lestrako. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor of moving back into the regular meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is where we are. We are back into our regular meeting. And now...
They're going to entertain...
Yep, the ordinance itself. So why don't we take the motion, and then I'll ask if there's any commissioners or resident questions. Is there a motion for approval of ordinance 708?
Some move.
Motion by Commissioner Andrews, second by Vice President Rogers. Are there any questions or comments by commissioners? Questions or comments by residents? No?
Just want to comment, I appreciate you being proactive on this matter, such that we don't have issues as this whole EV era expands, so thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner, and have to credit our fire marshal, Mike Waldron. He's well ahead of all these things and brings those to us, so he deserves the credit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'm going to call the question. All in favor of ordinance 708, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. All right, we have two other items that are under...
Back to me, thanks, Mr. President.
Paul's back to you.
We have a grant application resolution for the board to consider. This is in partnership with Hatfield Borough. This is in partnership with the Partnership TMA. Commissioners, you remember, we've had now TMA out a few times, that it's a transportation group that its mission is essentially to create a safer place for bikers, walkers, runners, all modes of transportation. They have a grant that they've been doing through the township to create safer intersections. This is an additional grant that they're applying for through Montgomery County, through the 2040 Grant Program. If awarded, this grant would then take some of the work that they're doing, creating safe bike and recommended bike routes throughout the township. This would add signage, maybe some charros, the paint striping in the roads, to give people an idea of where they think is a safe place to bike. So we... The commissioners have been doing this for many years, creating trails and bike lanes, and this is just an extension of that. The liability of the township, if awarded, is relatively inexpensive. Our portion of the match would be roughly $15,000. The Borough would have a portion as well, and the grant from the county would be about $120,000. So it's a good partnership and a worthy initiative, and if the board would consider approving the resolution, that would then allow us to apply for this funding.
All right. Is there a motion for approval of that grant application for the bike safety improvements? It's Resolution 2503. Is there such a motion? Motion by Vice President Rogers.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lestrako. Any questions or comments from any commissioners? Questions or comments from residents? All right. Great idea for the grant application. I'll add that, and with that, I'll call the question. All in favor of Resolution 2503, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. One last item?
Thanks, Mr. President. Lastly, another housekeeping item. Every three years, we enter into an agreement with Montgomery County for our Public Works Every three years, we enter into an agreement with Montgomery County for our Public Works Team to maintain Unionville Pike from a snow removal standpoint, not from a repaving or maintenance, simply removing snow. The county pays the township to do this work. This is, we're not making money off of this. It all depends on the winter. It's a flat rate. It's not a negotiable rate. It's flat rate for three years, roughly $3,500 a year to the township. In Hatfield, PennDOT plows all of the state roads. Some towns have an arrangement like this with PennDOT, but we have some significant state roads that run through our township, and PennDOT still handles those. So this is simply entering into another three-year agreement with the county for us to plow and salt Unionville Pike.
All right.
It's only the, Unionville Pike, only the Unionville Pike?
The only county road in the township is Unionville Pike from Route 309 to Hatfield Borough.
Right.
Just that stretch.
Okay.
The rest is state, right?
The rest of the roads in Hatfield that aren't township are state.
I meant that road when it goes to Borough is state.
I think it becomes a Borough Road at that point, Union. And then at some point, it does turn into a state road. Yeah, that's where it gets a little confusing. Thankfully, it's not my responsibility, but you're right, Mr. President. There were some battles over the years.
All right, is there a motion for approval of the winter maintenance agreement for Montgomery County Unionville Pike location? Motion by Commissioner Andrews, second by Commissioner Lestrako. Any questions or comments? Questions from commissioners? Questions, questions from residents? All right, hearing none, I'll, I'll call a question. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. Okay, anything else?
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Mr. Solicitor.
It's your time.
Nothing to report tonight.
Well, we kept you busy with the public hearing.
Yes, earned my money.
So before we go to public citizens' comments, sorry, I just want to, the board has a short statement to make. We have been asked to publicly reassert our commitment to the treatment of Hatfield residents to each other with civility, dignity, and respect, which is something of a motto around here for as long as we've, we've all been commissioners. And I'll, I'll read that to you. A few, a few meetings ago, a number of Hatfield residents, a few were with us tonight, brought to our attention a series of posts on private websites that could be described as hate speech. While the posts were not on a township website, the posts were upsetting enough to bring residents, a sizable group of residents, to us, and they've asked us, like I just said, to publicly restate our opposition to any hate speech, such as what was presented to us by the residents that evening. Over the years, our, one of our primary goals on this board has been to ensure that we treat each other in Hatfield with exactly what I told you about before, which is civility, dignity, and respect. It is a motto for us. And so publicly, we are rejecting any, we are publicly stating, we reject any statements or posts that do not treat people with civility, dignity, and respect. And to the extent that we can, as a board, facilitate and support that goal, we will do so. And we hope that residents in Hatfield in particular will follow our lead. And we want to thank Mr. Bagwal and a number of other residents who joined him from a couple of meetings ago for coming to us and bringing this to our attention. And of course, we'll stay vigilant in our own work and duties to make sure that hopefully people follow our lead in, in the motto that I just described.